Welcome to the May 28, 2024 Tuolaton City Council meeting. We'll start off our meeting in accordance with our agenda, which is starting off with our Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Councilor Sacco.
If everybody could please stand and face the flag. Can I have your hand?
I have my pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to announcements. Our first announcement tonight is a proclamation declaring June 2024 as Gun Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tuolaton, and we have representatives from Moms Demand Action. Come on up. Don't be shy. You both can come up.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Mary Pat Hensel, and I represent Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. And what we really want to call your attention to is the ability to have the proclamation that you're about to be able to proclaim in our favor is to just build awareness in your community, to make sure that people understand that firearm violence is prevalent, it's more prevalent than we want it to be, and that we need to remember the survivors as well as the people that have perished from firearm violence. And so we wear orange in their honor. I'm a survivor. My brother took his own life by firearm, and we in Oregon have a suicide rate by firearm of 79%, which compares to 57% nationwide. So we have a lot of work to do to build this awareness. National Gun Violence Awareness Day is June 7, and the weekend where orange is June 7 through the 9th. But having the whole month of June allows us all to wear orange as much as we possibly can, and also to make sure that we allow everyone in the community to understand just one little piece more of information about this epidemic that we have in our country. And it's all around us. If you talk to someone, everyone knows someone. And so we revere the fact that we're able to come and explain to you as well as to be able to have you uphold this important information.
And I agree with her. I'm Debbie Henry, and she speaks for me also. I totally agree with everything she says. And thank you for wearing orange. Just really appreciate it.
The other thing, if you use social media, it's hashtag wear orange, capital W-E-A-R, capital O-R-A-N-G-E, and all together concatenated. So, thank you.
So I know Terry usually does this, and she tells a story. Why orange?
Oh, why orange is because it's the color that builds enough awareness so that people can actually sort of see people. Hunters use it. But also, it's because of a young woman, Hadiah Pendleton. It was her favorite color. And she perished by gun violence after being at Obama's second inaugural as a majorette. A couple weeks later, she was at home, and there was some violence, and she was hit by a bullet and perished. And her friends said, "Orange is her favorite color. We are going to celebrate her life."
Thank you. All right. So with that, Councilor Reyes will read the proclamation.
Yeah, thank you very much. As a victim of gun violence myself, I survived three shots to my body. My body survived that, and I am here and spent 38 days in a coma, tried to live, and I just am thankful for that. And I really agree with you on wearing orange and bringing awareness to people about the danger of guns. Proclamation declaring June 2024 to be Gun Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tuolaton. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded. And on an average, there are more than 18,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas Oregon has an average of 587 gun deaths every year, Oregon has the 34th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S., and whereas cities across the nation are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas support for the second, whereas for the support of the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizen goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and increase in city gun violence. Whereas in January 2013, Hadiah Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And in June, and in June, to recognize Hadiah Pendleton's birthday, born June 2, 1997, people across the United States recognize gun violence awareness and wear orange in tribute to Hadiah Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiah's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas by wearing orange in June, Tuolaton will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolaton, Oregon, that June 2024 is Gun Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tuolaton. The community is encouraged to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Introduce and adopt it this 28th day of May 2024.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is a proclamation declaring June 2024 as Pride Month in the city of Tuolaton, and it's be led by Councilor Sacco.
Thank you. And this proclamation is declaring June 2024 to be Pride Month in the city of Tuolaton. Whereas the city council's 2030 vision is for Tuolaton to be an inclusive community that promotes equity, diversity, and access in creating a meaningful quality of life for everyone. And whereas Tuolaton is a community that includes values and welcomes diversity in our community, including diversity of sexual orientation and identity. And whereas we recognize, support, and appreciate the invaluable contributions of the members of our LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas Pride Month is currently celebrated each year in the month of June to honor the 1969 Stonewall uprising in Manhattan. And whereas many LGBTQIA+ community members continue to face harassment and physical violence and are four times more likely to experience violent victimization than non-community members. And whereas LGBTQIA+ youth are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to straight cisgender youth. And each episode of the LGBTQIA+ victimization, such as physical or verbal harassment or abuse, increases the likelihood of self-harming behavior by 2.5 times on average. And whereas we remain steadfast in our dedication to eliminate the prejudice and discrimination faced by members of the LGBTQIA+ community. Whereas we seek to amplify the voices of the LGBTQIA+ community, including youth, allies, and student groups, such as Tuolaton High School's Gay-Straight Alliance and Hazelbrook Middle School's Aqua Club. And whereas we believe that the rich diversity of communities in Tuolaton is one of our greatest strengths. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolaton, Oregon, that June 2024 is Pride Month in the city of Tuolaton. The community is encouraged to respect and honor our diverse community, celebrate and build a culture of inclusivity and acceptance. Introduce and adopt it this 28th day of May 2024. And with that, I would just like to invite everybody to the Tuolaton Pride Stride on Saturday, June 22, at 10:00 a.m. at the Tuolaton Commons.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the room who would like to address the council, I'll allow that first, and then anybody in Zoom. So we have anybody in the room who would like to address the council on public comment? All right? Anyone in Zoom?
Yeah, we have nine.
She's just, she's in the front.
Yeah, I think she, yeah. None? All right. That'll bring us to consent. These are items that are considered routine that were adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. The consent agenda consists of three items this evening. Item number one, consideration of approval of the regular meeting minutes of May 13, 2024. Item number two, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for straightaway cocktails. And item number three, consideration of resolution number 5776-24, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Justice for trauma-informed response training. Would any councilor like an item removed from consent?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion as second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on those motions? Council Brooks?
I just want to say, as far as resolution number 5776, authorizing city manager to execute a grant agreement with Oregon Department of Justice for trauma-informed response training. I appreciate the leadership of our police department and the energy behind this, and look forward to learning more. And I'm grateful for the work.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. That brings us to general business. So item number one, consideration of resolution number 5774-24, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement for small cell facilities in the right-of-way with Crown Castle Fiber LLC. Welcome, Nick.
Hello. I'm situated here. Mayor, council, good evening. Nick Westendorf, I'm your deputy public works director, and I'm happy to be here. Okay, let me make sure I know how this works. We are good. Our agenda this evening, I would like to give a brief overview of what small cell technology is. I realized in prepping this meeting that I believe the mayor was the only one here back when we discussed the construction. Were you here? Okay. Maybe my notes were wrong. Not everyone was here when we discussed the construction standards 2017, 18. So I wanted to go over that timeline. We will discuss the lease agreement and what's included. We'll talk about what a small cell installation process will look like, partnership with PGE, and just kind of what the applicant will experience when they come to the city to deploy. And then we will move to the resolution to authorize the agreement and any discussion. I was too quick with it. Okay. Timeline. So back in September 2018, we had a FCC, a Federal Communications Commission, ruling that basically made a bunch of cities scramble to create design standards for small cell technology. There was a mandate that we get processes and fees in place in a very short timeline. And so myself, with our previous public works director, stood up that with the council at the time, who multiple of you were here for. That was completed in September and November of that year ahead of the end of December deadline. So we came up with construction standards, what they can look like, where they can go, what the size of them is, and then some applicable fees that we'll charge based on anticipated staff time. We hadn't done those before, so we've done some best guesses of what a review will look like. All of that work was done in partnership with the three large cell carriers. So AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile were part of that process for that whole lift, for those four months. And fast forward to 2024, we have our first interested applicant to look to deploy small cell in Tuolaton, Crown Castle. They build these sites on spec. I'm not sure what service provider it's for, but they came and approached us and basically identified the downtown area is needing additional cell capacity, speed, and coverage. And we're interested in working with the city and asked that we prepare a lease agreement in the event that we need to execute it. And so this evening, we are here to bring that to you. All right, so what is small cell? They are basically miniature cellphone antennas. They complement the large cellphone towers that you typically see on sides of roadways at a couple of our facilities here, the Norwood Reservoirs. They are not meant to replace those larger facilities, they supplement them. So they'll typically be attached to smaller infrastructure around the roadways, and they're only good for a few couple hundred yards. And they just kind of fill in the gaps in coverage due to topography or high traffic in the area. So this gives a little kind of idea, the image of what it would look like. But basically, they're just complementary additions to the existing system, not replacements of. Why do we want them? Cellphone coverage in Tuolaton can be spotty. We've heard that for a long time now, particularly the downtown area, the west station, and the lake can be kind of challenging, the high school by ASR site. So we know there's areas where the cellphone coverage can be improved, and we've heard that these are the way to get there. So we wanted to make sure that there's a path forward for providers when they're ready to expand their coverage here. The three images we've got here, these are old. These were from back when we made the initial rules in 2018, but they're mockups of what they could look like. And typically, they'll attach to something that's existing already. So streetlights is a very common practice. They already have electricity, they're already in the right-of-way near where people are. So these are just three examples of what we could see. They're typically built into the pole or mounted on the pole. They're generally kind of stealthy and not very large. But they have a bunch of different styles and applications, and they look a little bit different depending on where they're put. And to our lease agreement, so we currently have a right-of-way license process, which all of our utility operators in the city abide by. They come and express interest in operating here, whether it be electricity, telecommunications, natural gas. We have rules that they have to follow, insurance requirements, processes, and there's a five-year license that goes along with that. We did our, we did our best. We've done our best to mimic that with our lease agreement. So it's a five-year term. It points to or reinforces many of the provisions in the right-of-way code, trying to keep things applicable where possible. But it does build upon those to address the uniqueness of these attachments on city-owned infrastructure. So as I said, mimics what we typically have. It does identify an additional fee. So this would be in addition to the fee for operating in Tuolaton, operating the right-of-way. This would be a lease fee for the space occupied on the asset. So if they want to attach to a city streetlight, we'll charge them an additional fee, and that's for the administrative work and any increased maintenance or overhead for that attachment being on that specific site. So it's a fee in addition to others, not a replacement of, and it's specifically for that space used. And then it has a handful of other provisions that are unique to these. So they talk a little bit about extra insurance that's being required, extra compliance that's needed with some of the electrical components of some of these facilities, some additional maintenance and construction things we'd like to see. So there's just some extra provisions, given the fact that they're mounted in the air, on poles, close to the right-of-way. Wanted to make sure that we had good, strong provisions in there, and there's good coverage for the city, our residents, and for the cell provider. And again, it'll be for a five-year term, so then they'll renew, similarly like they would with a right-of-way operator's license. So the process. This will look a little different depending on what they want to attach to, but my understanding is streetlights are the most desirable location. They're everywhere, and they have electricity. The poles are generally pretty sturdy or can be updated to be sturdy enough to accommodate these. So I kind of, I won't go through each cell with you all, but I kind of had two paths that we likely see this going on. Is it on a streetlight or a utility pole? Yes or no? And then who owns the pole? So most likely, they'll submit an application, we'll review what type of attachment it's on. This lease agreement could apply to other infrastructure in the right-of-way, but we don't have a lot of that that would support this type of deployment. We don't allow these on signal poles, and we don't allow them in close proximity to signals. So utility poles and streetlights are the most likely outcome. So we'd go, yes, it's on a streetlight or utility pole. And then we would want to make sure that it's owned by PGE. We previously, about five years ago, decided to start to transfer our ownership of our streetlights to PGE. So they are now primarily the owners and operators of those poles. They have the vast majority of the poles at this point, now that the LED lights are converted. So we anticipate they'll be the owner. If it's not the case, we would trigger an ownership transfer at that point in time because we know the pole needs to be replaced to accommodate this facility, and we know eventually we want PGE to own the poles, so this is a natural catalyst for that change to occur. So we would then make sure the pole ownership is transferred, and they would then go through PGE's process to lease that space, not our process. They wouldn't need to execute our lease agreement if that's the case. If it was a city-owned pole, process looks very similar. We just execute this lease agreement, go through our construction standards, review it, and make sure it meets all of our needs. But I think that that would be far less likely than the PGE route. So I would anticipate most of the folks would go through the PGE leasing agreement, and then at the end, all roads point back to our city code, our construction standards back when council adopted those in 2018. Those all still apply. So even if they do use the PGE lease and go on a PGE pole, all of our standards are applicable, size, dimensions, spacing, sighting, all of that stuff is still relevant. And that's what I had. That was a lot. That was kind of quick. Staff recommend approval of the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement with Crown Castle Fiber. And I'll hand it back to the mayor if there's questions.
Questions for Nick? Council Brooks, then Council President Pratt, then...
I might have a question.
Okay.
Thanks for the presentation. My, I had two questions. One was, it can help improve cellphone quality. Is it only with the provider that is leasing?
Yes.
And then, and it's a right-of-way thing, so whoever's there first?
Yeah, so we do not allow multiple locations on the same pole. But the poles are close enough together that we would envision multiple carriers could service the same area. But it would be primarily benefiting whoever's building that infrastructure. Their customers would reap the primary benefit.
Okay. So it's not about how many people in Tuolaton have a particular service? Okay.
Just whoever's interested to build out that infrastructure based on their demands.
Okay. And then my other question is, I know that the technology has changed a lot, where it's a lot smaller. I remember when we were first talking about this, and it was, there were a lot of lawyers.
Yes.
It was very interesting. First, it was selling it, and there was all these pretty pictures, and then it was managing it, and then we saw the lawyers. So with the ways that things have changed and updated, how often do we update the last, the standards?
Design standards?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we haven't touched them since we adopted them, and we haven't had any applicants. So we haven't really had a need to update them. I will say, we had pretty tight rules when we adopted them. We had pretty, it was pretty reasonable, right? Very small footprint, very conservative in how many and where they can go. We can update the public works construction code. That's where those live as often as needed. I think what could be a good catalyst is to get a couple in and see how it goes, and see how much staff time it takes, and see what lessons we learn, and then we could potentially look to adjust fees or standards as we see fit. PGE has been a little bit more aggressive in their rules and keeping those up to date because they've seen deployments in some of the larger, Portland and some of the larger urban areas. I believe theirs are more restrictive than ours. So if they do go on a pole, they would have to abide by those. But I can't speak to how much it's changed since 2018. Our code has not. Just the technology itself.
Yeah, the technology. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Council President Pratt?
I might be asking the same question, and excuse my ignorance, but like, how does Crown Castle, they sell their area to like T-Mobile?
Yeah, so typically, they'll lease it out to somebody. So they've got a provider in mind that's going to occupy these. I don't know who that is.
Okay.
But they'll, someone will approach them, say, "We want to expand service in this area. Can you help us go through the permitting process, construct the facilities, get the leases in place?" That's what they do.
Okay.
And then that capacity likely goes to one of the big three or their sub.
So would that mean if, like, I have T-Mobile and my neighbor has Verizon, that I would get to take advantage of this, and that it wouldn't help them much at all?
I don't know how roaming and cross-coverage works. Bates might be able to chime in about that.
That helps because I don't feel quite as ignorant.
From the peanut gallery. My understanding is that the primary benefit is to the customers of that service provider or any sub-companies. Like Verizon operates at Visible, right? So they both, right, work on that network. Whereas you wouldn't necessarily get the full benefit if you were on like an AT&amp;T or a T-Mobile. There might be some general roaming coverage, but I don't think that's geared towards the 5G high-speed. The mayor's nodding. Okay, I'm going. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Sacco?
For those of us who weren't around, I'm just wondering, you know, if there are any downside considerations. Obviously, the aesthetic isn't that different, but just wondering if there's anything that we might want to know that we don't know for those of us who weren't around.
Yeah. I will say that the general climate around the concerns for these facilities has died down greatly since we went through the big scramble in 2018. Considerations then that we took into account when we made those rules were interference with other electrical equipment, which is why we have the buffer around signals, because we have a lot of electrical equipment and signals that are safety-focused. So we built that buffer. There was concerns around aesthetics, so we tried to make sure those were pretty reasonable. You know, poles attached in the right-of-way aren't the most attractive thing, but they do serve a purpose. And then there were some health concerns that we heard when these rules came through, varied greatly in the validity of those, I guess, and we did work through those and try to take that into consideration. But there's already a number of cellular radio frequencies in the world today. So we just did our best to accommodate the things that were within our control while meeting the FCC rule requirement and trying to make a rule that the cell providers could work with.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think the biggest source of contention was, at the time, the FCC had a cap on what they were allowed for fees, and that's why the lawyers were in the room. Basically, forcing the issue of we weren't allowed so much wiggle room on a fee, no matter what it really costs us to implement. The FCC had a rule at the time, I think it's still probably there.
Yeah.
That limited what cities could charge for these fees. And at the time, cities were livid about it. It was a federal breach of home rule, telling us what we could charge for fees, and that was the biggest source of contention.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And at the time, lawyers came in, a lot of city councils felt, we felt kind of threatened. We're at three carriers because they had their team of lawyers basically telling us, "You've got to do this or else." And Nick and Jeff did a great job on the design standards and stuff like that. Council Hillier?
Thank you for that history. I'm curious if it's really, if we ever look at from our side and say, well, we know that these are high-usage areas like the parks. I mean, every weekend, the parks are, like, do we go back to this company and say anything about what needs we think we might have in the community, or is it really just they're working for whomever it is they are, so we don't really have any say? Or could we create that dialogue, not, is that an option?
Yeah, I think the shorter answer is they're serving their customer, wherever the market demand is. When they come to apply, I think we can definitely work with them to try to position citing to accommodate gaps we know exist, or ask about additional sites after that first expansion is done, highlighting areas that we know we have high needs in. We've talked about that. They seem open to working with us. There's no way for us to require that. We don't have an incentivization process. But I think we can definitely shift the conversation in that direction and just try to make sure they're aware of what we would like to see.
At the time, they were aware of their gaps, and it was going to be basically customer-driven, that depending which provider you're on, you know where in Tuolaton, you're going to lose your signal right now.
Or never have one at all.
Oh, never have one. I know your area's an issue. There's issues around where I'm at, and there's issues around the hospital. But the carriers know it, and one of the reasons they said they were going to deploy this was it's cheaper to deploy this and put more towers up.
Yeah.
Other questions? Council Reyes?
Are these towers, well, you say PGE owns most of our...
Streetlights.
Streetlights.
Yes.
Are they, because they're looking into the downtown area, too. Does PGE own those as well?
Yeah.
Because I know at one point they were...
There's...
Still working on it.
Yeah, they are still working on it. They're nearing completion. Streetlight ownership is rather complex as we navigate from city-owned to PGE-owned, but they own the vast majority of them.
Already.
And we only own and maintain nine streetlights in the city of Tuolaton, so the rest... So the rest of the nearly 3,000, I want to say, lights that we have are going to fall under the PGE process.
Okay, thank you.
Council Hillier?
Sorry, one other question. Just to clarify, the $250, I mean, if it's on PGE's equipment, do they collect the $250 or does the city collect the $250?
PG has their own fee. So they, whatever their lease fee is, they would collect. If it's on our equipment, we'll collect the $250 fee and then we'll collect, regardless of whose equipment it is, the additional fees, the application fee, the right-of-way fee. Wait, stick down my presentation. You're good. I had a fee slide at the end. Yeah.
So realistically, the $250 per device?
Yes.
Is only on nine poles?
Yes, and I did ask PG about getting those nine poles over to their ownership, so that might go away. Theoretically, the lease is applicable to other infrastructure. So if they do come to us with something in the right-of-way that the city owns that we're not giving to PG, we could levy the fee, execute the lease agreement and help them deploy.
But this is an anticipation of something that isn't a PGE light pole or utility pole?
Yeah, or if it's one of those nine and for some reason PG doesn't want ownership. I did stick this after the question slide, sorry, this was sneaky. I didn't know if the fee question would come up. It wasn't the primary topic.
Oh, you knew.
But I assumed we might want to see this. So the application fee is $660, that's regardless of site. The attachment fee is $625, that's regardless of site. That's for being in the right-of-way, not poll-specific, just within our right-of-way. And then that usage fee in the lease agreement, that's what you'll pay per pole that you attach to. So for us, it's $250, for PGE, it's whatever theirs is, I'm not pervy to that. And then there's the fee difference that the city will collect depending on where the citing is.
Council President Pratt?
So can another company like Crown Castle come in that works for, is going to contract with another cell provider?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll take whomever would like to come.
Okay, and we can't require them to have 10,000 minimum?
We don't have that currently as a FCC to go.
Yeah.
Following up her, Councilor Pratt's question, so once this one, once this resolution is amended or established, do we need to, you're going to come to us and ask us again to, oh, so-and-so, right now it's Crown.
Yes.
Next time it's going to be some, whoever you're going to come to us and.
If it was another provider, that would come back to council for a separate lease agreement, yeah.
Other questions? I've got a couple. So since we'd set the $250 fee six years ago, is that sufficient to cover a cost of staff time? Because it's six years ago, adjusted for inflation and then they're going to get a five-year deal for $250 a year, probably without an inflation adjustment? So just asking.
Yeah, we don't have.
Because back then, we knew $250 was tight.
We don't have an index. So just the point of clarification, the $660 and the $625 were developed in 2018. The $250 came about a little after.
Okay.
So it's a little bit more recent than that, but it is not extremely current. These were our best estimates. What I know we had discussed the last time we brought these back in 2018, which I thought was going to transpire a little sooner, was we would do the first round of these, track our times, see how it goes and then come back and do some type of report out after the first year or two and see if we needed to adjust our fees for additional sites in the future. That's still something that's been in the back of my mind that I would plan on executing. I mean, we could relook at these. I think the usage fee in particular is going to be a pretty light lift for staff, getting the attachment on the pole. So I feel like it's sufficient until we know better, but.
Okay. But there's no index for inflation, no automatic adjustment over the five-year term?
There is not, and there isn't with our other right-of-way fees either. So this was just a consistent, yeah, lock it in one-time fee.
So say we go with this and it starts rolling out over the year and we realize, oh crap, this ain't covering it and company XYZ comes in wanting to do the same thing for XYZ Mobile, how nimble we're going to be able to adjust the fees in the next contract without them pointing to this contract?
Yeah, my understanding is that the usage fee was not part of the FCC ruling. Kevin may overrule my memory on that. But I think to your point, we could be nimble and each provider is going to have to execute their own lease agreement. We would like to use this as a template, but we know contracts get negotiated each time they arise. And so if we have better knowledge of what we think the fees are, we can adjust that. I recall when we did the fees that we set here, they were above the FCC minimum, safe and reasonable or whatever the fair harbor was. And that was justified through staff's estimation of how much, how many hours we would spend and what the process would look like. So I suspect if we learn something through this process and a new provider comes and we know it costs us more money and we can justify that, it's just an update to the lease agreement.
I just want to make sure staff and city managers comfortable with this amount because, again, we're going in an unknown area, we have no idea, maybe it's easy-peasy or it's not so easy-peasy. Rachels, keep going.
The justification is what's important.
Come on up, come on up.
Oh, yeah. The justification of staff is what's important.
And I think the big lift is really going to be the application. I think that review is going to be the hefty part. I think the getting on the poll and the $250 a year once it's set and replaced is probably a pretty light lift from staff, maybe just getting some updated maps, making sure they're current.
Is the application fee what's limited by the FCC?
Yeah, they all were.
And that's for, just so people know, is that per poll or for all the polls, the $660?
Per site.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all per site.
And a site is?
So each poll, one poll, one facility, one.
It's each poll.
Yes. I'm thinking of it as like cellular antenna, but yes, we will do one per poll.
It's not all Twelton, you're not paying the one fee from all you. I just want to make sure people and the audience.
No, that is not correct and we didn't allow batching, so they'll pay per site.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to, do I have to do first or second or, no, okay. I make a motion to approve, adopt. Thank you, resolution number 577424, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement for small cell facilities in the right-of-way with Crown Castle Fiber LLC.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution 5774-24, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement for small cell facilities in rights of way with Crown Castle Fiber LLC. Any discussions on those motions? You said it's just a voice vote or is it?
No.
But it's a roll call though.
It's all general business.
You got a roll call, okay. Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council President Pratt?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. That's unanimous. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you. I'll just hang out.
All right. Next item up on the agenda is consideration of resolution number 5775-24, adopting the Community Climate Action Plan, or CAP.
Hello again. Glad to get to hang out with you this evening. I'll reintroduce myself since this is a new thing. Nick Westendorf, your Deputy Public Works Director, here this evening for consideration of adoption of our Community Climate Action Plan. Oh, it's going to go twice. I did it again. Okay, our overview. So I want to start with the goal. That's kind of what the whole plan is built on, so I just want to reorient ourselves to what our North Star is for the document and the process. I'll talk a little bit about the plan, just what's included at a very high level, how it's structured, a little bit of a refresh and the process that we went through over the last two years to get to tonight, just to kind of level set for where we're at. It's been a while since we were in front of you to discuss this topic, so I would also like to update you on what we've done since the last time I was here. We came a while back and presented to you the draft plan. We were going into our final phase of community engagement, so I've got a few updates coming out of that. And then we've got some time for Q and A. I've also got in there a little bit of feedback for implementation that I'd like to gather this evening while I'm here with you all. And then ultimately, the resolution for your consideration. So the goal, net zero by 2050. The plan is situated, the actions are crafted and intent to get us to this goal. So that is net zero carbon emissions by the year 2050. That's a national and international standard. Many climate action plans you'll find are based with this as the end of the roadmap. So I just want, that's what we used, that's what we're hoping to achieve. And let me skip a slide. I'm not good with this clicker, sorry. Okay, plan overview. So the upside-down pyramid scheme, we have a kind of a funneling situation that goes on with the plan. So we started from broad sections, narrowed down to very, very specific actions that talk about who's assigned to it, what it does, how it supports the plan. This is just a little bit of an overview of what the plan looks like. I won't roll through all of these because I know we've brought you these in the past, but I just wanted to remind everyone, the two big sections are preparing for climate change and reducing our emissions. The other two are introduction and implementation, they're rather light. And then underneath those, we have focus areas. These were scoped by council before the plan started. These were the lenses at which we applied and how we wanted to seek actions to adopt to or reduce emissions for climate change. There are seven of those primary focus areas. Within the focus areas, we've got strategies. Those vary greatly around number, depending on which focus area and which strategy or how many strategies there are. But you can kind of see here, this is what the plan structure looks like. You'll have a focus area, a variety of strategies, and then within each strategy, you'll have multiple actions that support that strategy. So we're just kind of honing in on if we want to do something, where do you look in the plan to figure out what options we have to execute to achieve that goal? And then within each strategy, I said, actions, this is what the actions look like. So you'll have very specific language around what the action is. We have listed who is a stakeholder internal and external, so we know who's assigned to it. We know what partner agencies or government agencies need to be involved, what programs it impacts, and then all of the co-benefits that council scoped that we wanted to measure in terms of what it does for the plan, how it impacts the community, level of cost, level of emissions reduction. So from very, very broad to very, very narrow. All-in, four sections, seven focus areas, 28 strategies, 146 actions. It's a very, very large plan. The actions came from the community, they came from some feedback with council and our steering committee, they came from our external partners, our utility partners, our government agency partners. So there's a ton in here, we'll talk about that later, but I just wanted to show kind of the culmination of what the roll-up looks like. And some key outcomes, that's how we've begun phrasing the plan to talk about it with folks because it's so big and so overarching. So we've decided to focus on key outcomes and I think that's a really nice way to just discuss what you'll see in here. So. The clicker's throwing me off, I'm sorry. Preparing for climate change, adaptation, all the things we need to do to get used to living with our changing climate, more extreme weather, heat, smoke, all of that kind of thing. How do we protect our natural systems, wetlands, trees, wildlife? How do we protect our infrastructure, all of our built environment, our people and jobs? How are we sure we have economic vitality for this? Reducing emissions, looks at building emissions, it looks at land use, so how we're developing our city and how we're using the land we have. Reducing car dependency comes up in a number of ways, but it either looks at active transportation, reducing vehicles, supporting public transportation. And then there's a whole consumption section that is generally based on reducing consumption or more sustainable consumption. And then we wanted to make sure that the plan positions the city for action. So we wanted to make sure the roadmap was clear, we wanted to make sure the actions were easy to follow, we understood what they meant, we understood who would do them, we wanted to make sure that the outcomes are measurable so that there was accountability and we knew what we could expect. It's aligned with our regional partners' goals, so we worked with metro, state agencies, all of the relevant folks, transit agencies, counties. We wanted to make sure all of our goals are in sync, that we're supporting the same things, that we're rowing in the same direction because we don't do this alone and there's a lot of overlap. We've got two counties and tons and tons of partners, so it's aligned with them. And we wanted to make sure this positions us for external funding. We know there's a lot of money out there right now and we wanted to craft a plan in the way that also recognizes the historic investment we're seeing in this work and positions us if we are interested in mobilizing on that. Okay, the process. So these four guiding principles came out of the scoping process as well. The plan is rooted in these. We wanted the plan to be science-based, so we brought on a consultant expert who could help us do that. We wanted to focus equity, we did that throughout the entire process. We made sure everything was in Spanish, we had Spanish-speaking workshops, we helped bilingual workshops, we hired a sub-con consultant who did an excellent job engaging the Spanish-speaking portion of our community. Tried some other languages with mixed success, but we did get a really good Spanish engagement and we got very good English engagement. We just wanted to make sure the whole community was heard, business community, low-income folks, students, we did some work with the high school, so we wanted to make sure we had a good representation. Focus on community benefits, there's a lot of benefits outside of emissions reductions, so those are highlighted in here. We wanted to make sure we represented those and took advantage of those. And then again, partnerships, we wanted to make sure that that was something we took advantage of where possible. We based it off of our consultants' scientific findings, so we know very clearly where our emissions come from as a community and what we need to do to reduce those. And we know what we can expect our climate to look like, which is this beautiful graphic of us moving to Lincoln, California shortly. And we use that as the basis for how we would respond to what we can expect to see. So again, science-based. The community engagement process, just to recap, was three phases. The buckets were phase one, build awareness, go to the community, let them know, here's what climate action is, here's what the city's thinking about doing, what do you think? Phase two is let's create the plan. So here's, you know, we had the focus areas, we had some of the strategies, let's work with the community to kind of build that out and hear what they're experiencing, what they'd like to see. And then phase three, which we most recently did in the fall of 2023, was here's the final plan, tell us what you think, what do you support, if you have concerns, what are your And here's a slide we've used a couple of times, but it just highlights, this is not a complete list, but many of the partners who participated throughout the process over the last two years, I just, thanks to all of them, that was huge to have them off the table and make sure that they were included. Okay, that's how the plan was made. That was a lot. What's happened since we met last? Since I was here last time, Northwest Natural has submitted comments, that came after the utility engagement, partner engagement process, but we did respond to those. So I'll touch on what we heard from Northwest Natural briefly and what we responded with. I'll give a brief overview of the phase three engagement, which measured support for outcomes. We added a density memo, I'll get to that when we get there, but there's a response to a critique to the plan. And then just some general time spent formatting the plan, getting the graphic designer to clean it up, getting the executive summary, some more administrative stuff, but we wanted to make sure the document was complete, professional and ready for adoption. Okay, these are not in the same order as my other slide. We're going to start with phase three engagement, I think. Yes. Okay, we reordered these, I forgot, thank you. So what we learned, big takeaway was overall, we listed outcomes for each of the focus areas and a majority of the respondents supported all of the outcomes. So we saw varying support, all of them above 50%. So I think that was really, it was really nice to see that we were on the right track and the community felt like we were hearing them and going in the direction they were hoping for. The majority of the support, protecting the environment, which we heard throughout the process over and over and over again, whether it's the natural, like the natural world or pets and wildlife, came up a ton. And protecting people. The adaptation actions scored higher than the emission reduction actions. A lot of people were interested in and supportive of making sure we are comfortable and thriving with whatever is to come. So that was, that definitely stood out. That is where people gravitated to. In terms of the emission reduction, support was pretty positive for responsible consumption. So buying more sturdy goods and services, buying reused or reduced stuff, drifting, we had just a lot of stuff about how consumers can be more responsible, that was well received. And reducing car dependency, reducing car dependency came up a bunch and was very supported. supported, but it came up in a couple of different ways. So I just want to make sure when we say reducing car dependency, it's not like anti-car tactics, right? But it's providing people more choice in their life so that they have options to get around, whether it be because of financial burden or climate concerns or livability concerns. There was a lot of people who were excited about walkable, bikeable neighborhoods, living closer to services. Triment expansion obviously is very exciting for folks if it, when it comes. All of those were standouts as highly supported. But concerns exist, and we saw some thematic concerns as well, and I want to make sure those are shared clearly. Cost, cost is a concern that came up over and over again, cost to homeowners, cost to the city, cost to businesses. There's a lot of folks that want to make sure we're being mindful of who's paying for these things and how they're being paid for in a way that isn't adversely affecting folks. Just something we should keep in mind as we go through implementation. A lot of comments came up around overregulation from government and where the city's role is in this work. Again, majority of people were supportive. I want to couch that with that, but there's definitely some sentiments about, you know, is, is this the role of City of Twelton or some expanded scope assumptions that I don't think are part of the plan, but were definitely a concern for folks? Natural gas ban was definitely a concern for folks as well. Lot of mixed feelings about that one, so I just wanted to identify that. It is in the plan. And uncertainty about density. I think my big takeaway around that is that we, as a community, don't have a shared definition of what density looks like. And we saw a lot of comments of wild variety of what density could mean for Twelton, everything from like Chinatown, Portland, to New York, to neighboring Beaverton, right? And so I think those concerns maybe could be addressed or dealt with if we work towards a little bit more framework around what that looks like. And we probably could have done a better job in the engagement, but as we look to implement these actions, I think defining that with the community and making sure what we know feels right is important. The impact to the plan, there is a co-benefit that measures community support. It's a little kind of plus one, minus one, zero. We updated those based on this feedback. So things that people showed a lot of support for got a plus one. That will help us in our implementation process. If there was a lot of concern, it got a minus one, and if it was neutral, it's a zero. And one other thing this does that's not directly in the plan, but there's a lot of insight for staff when we go to implement. So we can keep this document and dust it off when we pick up actions and go look at the relevant comments and make sure that we're responsive to the concerns we heard. Here's a bar chart showing community feedback for support per focus area. Blue is I support, orange is I do not support, gray has questions or concerns, yellow is unsure, but you'll see across the board above 50%. And largely, we saw a lot of support for what we have in the plan, which was just reaffirming that we, we are on the right track, I think. Okay, Northwest Natural. We got some comments from them. Thematically, there was a lot of technical comments that we worked through with our consultant and our staff. Those are a little above my pay grade to discuss, so I won't dive into those. But concerns over methodology were raised and responded to just around the process that was used with Good Company and forecasting emissions and conditions in the inventory and all of that. There was a set of concerns from Northwest Natural that the plan was, we had actions that were duplicated by the Climate Protection Plan, the CPP. And so that was called out as like the city is identifying an action that the state is already addressing through some type of regulation. So we responded to that as well and felt that it was important for us to keep those actions, just to make sure if other things happen at the state level, which they did, that we still have the ability to have that in our consideration in our toolbox. The CPP was overturned, so that is no longer in effect. So keeping those felt important. And then we got a bunch of comments from them around language, action language, and some of their terminology and programs. So things that maybe we weren't just super accurate on or some new emerging technologies, hydrogen is a great example, and some pavement reuse materials with black carbon that they're doing. They threw us a bunch of stuff that we could include or tweak to make sure we're capturing all this stuff that they're doing. They have a lot of cool innovative programs, so we got that as well. The updates were mainly focused around that last point. We did not remove any actions in response. And with the overruling of the CPP, we felt that it was a reinforcement of keeping those actions in the plan to make sure that regardless of what happens above us, we have some control on those resources in our toolbox. I did whip up a very quick graph. It's going to be kind of hard to see on the big screen, but the graph on the left is the one we showed you when we first met and talked about our emissions inventory and where we were headed with the state regulation. So red line is business as usual, yellow line is path to zero, and the stacks of colors on the graph are our various emissions categories. On the left, you'll see we get pretty low, and that blue bar gets very, very small. That is building energy. That is natural gas, propane, and electricity. The CPP being overturned, the Climate Protection Plan being overturned, happened midway through the plan. So I asked our consultants if they could just kind of capture what that assumption looks like without that being included. So they broke out the blue into two, light blue is natural gas, dark blue is electricity. And you'll see on the right side, that blue sliver just got a little bit bigger. So I do think Northwest Natural is working towards the same goals, but it just goes to show that changes in state regulation can impact some of these assumptions. One of the reasons we kept the actions in the plan was to make sure that that was something we were keeping within our control. And then we added a density memo. There's an appendix to the plan that's been added. It looks at densification of the, essentially the downtown area. One of the criticisms we heard when we were shopping the plan was that the densification actions only looked at reducing vehicle miles. And that's because it was easy to measure, the data is readily available, and we could model it within our budget. There is a lot of other benefits from densification. Building energy is a huge one. When you share walls, you use a lot less energy. And then there's a ton of co-benefits in terms of livability and walkability and community building. And so we heard some kind of pokes at that, that the, the actions didn't take that into account. So what we did, rather than re-scope and redo the whole emissions, was take a small section of town, an area that we've heard some interest in increasing density, and look at what those benefits would be. And so we used the downtown area. We used three metrics, our current housing mix, our housing mix found in the housing needs analysis, and then enhanced densification, which is just essentially the maximum density allowed by code. And we tried to measure some of those other benefits that we would see. So we have, in these graphs on the right, we have vehicle emissions, which you'll see increasing density drives down a little bit. But the graphs on the left, the one in the middle, measures building energy. You'll see a substantial gain there. And then on the far left, it measures enhancing density downtown versus green space development and the emissions reduction from like disrupting the land and building the green space. So we just wanted to make sure that we were fully capturing the benefits that come with these. We were wanting to be responsive to the feedback we heard. And we think it helps create a little bit more of a clear picture for what that could look like. So it's been added to, the plan is an appendix. It directly references the sections of the plan that it relates to and supports. And it's a little mini case study, if you will, for downtown Twelton. Okay, so next steps. We're here this evening for plan adoption, assuming that goes well. We will move into creating a five-year work plan. 146 actions is rather overwhelming, and so we would like to make that a little bit more bite-sized and have some shorter-term milestones to meet. So our anticipation would be to get together a staff, re-engage the steering committee, work on a five-year work plan that feels manageable, bring that back to council, have that also approved and authorized, have a little bit more of a discussion around capacity, costs, prioritization, all the sausage-making once we have a plan that we can start to work towards. And then once that process has been successfully worked through and we are all in agreement on where we want to go, we will begin implementing that work plan. Work's already going on. We're doing some stuff right now in, in the meantime, but we'll have a plan to work towards over the next five years. We would anticipate coming back annually with updates. We think annual progress reports or some, some frequency of progress reports will be good just to let you know how things are going, what's changed, how technologies changed, regulations. And then the consultants recommended that we update our plan every five years, emissions inventory to kind of measure our progress, capture any changes in the political landscape, regulatory landscape, technological landscape, to make sure that we aren't working to implement actions in 2030 or 2040 that are outdated and not relevant of what the future conditions will be. So this will kind of keep it nimble and living and make sure that we're, we're on the right path still as we go. Okay, so my next slide is Q and A and adoption, but we wanted to pause before we get to the end and seek some feedback from you all on implementation. So I've got some, some seating questions on the screen. I'm happy to give some examples of actions that might fall into buckets, but I would love to hear from you all if there's anything specific you'd like to see, if there's any lenses we'd like to use to prioritize actions we pick, most impactful, easiest, are you aligned with current work? Anything else that you want us to kind of bake into the work plan before we get to work on it? So.
I know I've got two folks who want to comment on the plan before we dive into that. So I want to give them an opportunity, the comment about this. So the first person I have who would like to speak is Mr. Kirschner. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council President, and members of the council. My name is Dan Kirschner. I have lived for 22 years at 17560 Southwest Fulton Drive, about less than a mile down the road there. I loved this community and been a part of it for that long, raised my kids here. They both graduated Twelton High School. So I'm, I'm here to talk a little bit on the climate action plan. As I start, I want to tell you that I think it's really important that we take climate actions that make sense for our community and that can actually make a difference. And so as an old Eagle Scout, very old Eagle Scout, more than 50 years ago, I got my Eagle Scout, I was always taught leave your campsite better than you found it. And I believe in that, and we ought to be moving in that direction, but we need to do it in a way that makes the most sense. And when I consider, think about those things, I do think about three questions that I always ask myself when it comes to policy, especially policies like this one. Can I depend on it to deliver what it's supposed to deliver? What is it going to deliver to me in terms of the objectives? And can I afford it? And for the most part, I have taken the time to look over the climate action plan. I contributed to the survey that went out recently last summer. I, I understand what's in it, and I'd say, wow, great presentation by your staff person. By the way, this is the first time I've actually talked to the city council, my own city council, so glad to be here. Thanks for that. Probably shouldn't be the last. So great job on, on a plan that for the most part, I think, makes a lot of sense for the city, especially when we're talking about things like adaptation and some mitigation measures that, that are included in the plan. But I do want to talk to you about two particular strategies or action items under strategies, the fourth strategy, which has to do with buildings. And those are action items 4.4 and 4.5. Two items in each one, one effectively bans gas connections in 4.4. 4.4 has to do with new buildings. One bans gas connections. The other basically requires electric appliances. And the second one in 4.5 is, basically talks about how do we replace appliances in existing buildings? And I got to tell you, you know, I like my natural gas. I like my furnace. And so I want to revisit the three questions that I mentioned at the outset. First is, what am I getting for it in terms of climate reduction or emissions reductions? Not much. We saw that buildings in the report, it says buildings make up 42% of this community's emissions. Of that, less than 10% is actually the combustion of natural gas. So why are we focusing on that item? 22% of those building emissions actually come from electricity. I raise that because it's important to understand that electricity is not a zero emission resource. It's not a zero emission energy, and it won't be for quite some time. So it's really important to understand what we're getting. The second is cost. It's really important to understand what the cost is. So in 2022, the cost of a unit of energy delivered to my home by Portland General Electric through electricity prices was $39.98 a decatherm. That's a unit of energy, which I'll be happy to explain later if you're interested. But $39.98 per unit of energy. The same unit of energy delivered to my home in natural gas is $12.83. So can I afford it to shift everything over to electricity? And that doesn't even count for the upgrades I would need to make in my home in terms of upgraded electricity service and, and the like in existing buildings. And let's talk about the added costs of, of making electric-only homes in new buildings or, or commercial businesses for that matter. Finally, is it dependable? I just point your, I know I'm about out of time here. I appreciate a little bit of grace. I just point your attention to our January cold snap. My gas fireplace worked just fine. I had hot water. I was able to cook a meal. I was out of power for 20 hours. The gas system didn't fail to deliver energy when it was needed. So it's a dependable and resilient resource. Guess in conclusion, we need it all, and I really appreciate the focus in buildings on energy efficiency and conservation and the focus on acquiring renewable resources and facilitating renewable resources, just like we're greening the electrons that we ship across the grid. We are greening the molecules that are being delivered by the gas grid. So I want to thank you for your time, and again, pleasure, appreciate the work that's been done.
Thank you. I understand, Naina Carlson from Northwest Natural is waiting on the line or waiting in Zoom perhaps?
Yes, I'm here. Do, do you want a video? If you want to, okay. There we go. Hi there. I'm Naina Carlson with Northwest Natural, Duke Government Affairs, and I wanted to thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing me to have a couple of minutes here. I am not an Eagle Scout, and I probably am not going to be as eloquent as Dan was. But I just wanted to kind of say a couple of things that are really pretty important to Northwest Natural. I'm going to give you some just baseline comments. I did submit a letter earlier today that I would ask Nicole to please add to the record and with some more backup information that kind of gives the real data behind some of the points I'm going to hit today. I just want you to know that we at Northwest Natural, we've been here 164 years. We grew up here. It's this community, this region is very important to us. We believe in a climate imperative, and we believe that we must act. We also feel that we should leverage our gas system that our customers have already paid for, and this is the mindset that we brought to the last two years of work with the city. And before I go into any much more detail, I did want to say, give kudos to Nick and his team. It was, we had a lot of hard conversations, frankly, and he was always super professional, super pleasant, and, you know, came from a place of how can we find the right spot? So it was just a real pleasure to work with him, even though this is a tough and, and complex subject. So I just want to put that out there. We think there's a lot in this plan that's really admirable. However, we definitely have some concerns with some of the assumptions. Dan touched upon those. And frankly, it comes down to the fact that a lot of folks think electrification equals decarbonization, and that's just simply not the case. Probably as one way to put it is our customers, in our whole service territory, we can generate between 74 and 90% of the space and water heat in our region. We do that and serve over half a state's population, and our customer usage is between 5 and 6% of the state's greenhouse gas emissions. It's a lot of energy for a very low-carbon footprint. And in fact, one of our electricity producers actually uses more natural gas than all of our customers, so that's something to think about. We really believe that there are some things in this, this plan that should be done, but there are other things such as gas bans that really don't make sense. It's more, it's more cost-effective and more reliable to leverage the gas system, changing the molecules that we send down that gas system to our customers to a lower, less carbon-intensive molecule. And if that protects your reliability, your affordability, your resiliency, all of that. And we have research, and I know that your survey, the city survey, basically showed that your customers want to protect their energy choice. They want to protect their affordability. And really, in light of some of the more severe weather we've had, they really want to protect their resiliency so they can shelter in place in those times where maybe the power's not working. So basically, we're just here asking the council, as you consider this plan, to remove the ineffective, costly, and frankly unconstitutional options like gas bans and work with both utilities to scale energy efficiency programs and low-carbon options and programs that really preserve that affordability, that resilience and choice. And we look forward to continuing to be at the table with staff to help get this plan right, because that's the most important thing, is that not only do we have a plan, but we have an achievable plan that has the results that we need to achieve the city's climate goals. And that's all. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room or in Zoom would like to speak in favor or against? See no one in the room? Nicole? Anyone has their hand up? All right, back to you, Nick.
Hello.
I guess bring back up your PowerPoint.
Well, I don't know where the PowerPoint's at, but direction on implementation, I think, was where we left off before we do the formal adoption, unless there's desire to respond to comments or do that in a different order. Mayor, I would defer to you.
Okay.
But.
I'm going to just open the floor. So the three, three things that Nick was looking for, any specific actions you'd like to see, any specific lengths slash criteria apply or any other considerations? So I'll just open it to the floor for council for questions, comments. Council Brooks, and then discussion. Council Brooks, and then discussion.
Thank you. I'm excited that we have this here today. It's been a long time that we've been talking about it and different starts and fits. And there's been a lot of work on it. And I don't know, just because just Councilor President Pratt and I've been on the steering committee, but there's been input from every single department. It's been well thought out, and a lot of the questions that people even have brought up tonight have been discussed and gone over with a lot of work. So I just want to really say thank you. I also heard someone say something about reaching out to our businesses. You can see this big graphic of all of our, all of our partners that we've had in this, as well as this info sheet that I found out in the hallway today for guidance for businesses. So I think that it's really important that you guys have sort of worked on that so well.
Thanks.
Yeah. So I guess the first thing is, as far as like backing it up, when we first passed this, one of the things we said was we'd look at measurable outcomes. So I, of course, I'd want to keep that in. We look at impact, and we look at efficiency. And then we'd also look at ways that would be helpful for learning, partnering, and inspiring people, so carrots. As far as talking about, just because the gas question has been brought up, I wouldn't see us doing a so-called gas ban as far as like first steps. But as far as having options in a plan that we might or might not take, to take away options for ourselves, if that was a place that we would find ourselves in, to me, does not make sense. It's not our action plan. It's our, it's our, to me, it's like the list of possibilities. And I think that, I don't think this council would go starting off with that. And I don't think that's what the city direction is. I just don't hear it. So I would like to hear what you have to say about that topic.
Yeah. The gas ban is controversial. People have a lot of mixed feelings. We heard support for it appearing in the plan, and we heard concern over it appearing in the plan. The final round of engagement was very specific to tell us your concerns, so we got a lot of concerns about that. But the support wasn't zero, right? We did see that that lands somewhere. So to Counselor Brooks, to Counselor Brooks' comments, we know natural gas is a part of our emissions portfolio that needs to be addressed. We know that how to get to zero with the current system is not fully defined yet. And so those actions remained in the plan because we wanted to keep them as a resource that the city could deploy when they determine fit. It would require another action of council. It would require another round of engagement, be a very large policy discussion. That would be a whole separate project. So I don't, I don't envision it showing up in the near-term work plan. I think we have a lot of low-hanging fruit that we could address. I think we have a lot of other actions that I think help get us there. But this plan is out to 2050, and this plan is to get emissions to zero. And to do that at some point, the natural gas emissions need to get addressed, whether that's through technological advances in Northwest Natural System, or whether it's through the reduction of gas use, or a combination of, which is probably the most likely outcome. And so incentivizing, or encouraging, or requiring electrification, or looking at not continuing to build gas connections and focusing on optimizing or reducing emissions from the current gas connections, we felt like those were important tools to leave. Ultimately, council can decide if you feel that way or not. But I just want, yeah, I want to highlight that, you know, we heard, we heard a lot of support as well of, we hope this is in the plan. We hope you're considering this. And then we heard the same concerns. So I think it's a good tool to have. I don't think it's a priority for year one through five, but ultimately, I didn't feel like that was staff's to take out.
And then the other thing I wanted to say was, as far as the, we had the Phase 1, Phase 2. Do you want to remind us what those are?
Of the plan or the engagement process?
The plan. And like, if you were to go.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and those are, those are a little nebulous right now. Thank you for the reminder. So Phase 1, you're talking community action plan, Phase 1, operational action plan, Phase 2. Yeah. So the first phase of, you know, when we scoped this, climate action planning is extremely broad. It can be focused on the community. It could be focused on an organization like the city and its operations. And then there's all this other stuff that's not emissions-related that's sustainable, like recycling and pesticide use and all of that stuff. To narrow the scope, because 146 actions was more than enough to start with, we focused on the community-facing climate action plan. So that's what we can do collectively as Twolton, not specifically as a city, but as a city. That's where the largest impact is going to be. That's where we're going to get the most groundwork laid and get the most measurable outcomes done in the beginning. Phase 2 is intended to be looking at the city operations specifically. So what can we do in Twolton on our day-to-day operations to reduce emissions? We've begun doing that already through a number of actions that I don't want to divulge us into, but this plan lays a replicable framework for a smaller organization, so we're doing that. But we would like to do that a little bit more robustly and memorialize that in a plan at some point. And then Phase 3 would be potentially all those sustainability-related things that aren't necessarily emissions-related, but are important to the community, recycling, pesticide use, native habitat, that kind of stuff. So there is, there's more to come once we get this under our belt.
Yes. So I just wanted to just remind people. And then finally, when we're talking about what lens we want to look through, I also think it's really important to keep in mind why we have the carbon measure goals. We know that we're not fixing this by ourselves. We know that from the plan, which I think is really great, that it looks at like days over 100 degrees and how we can reduce that. So this is a lot about, it's, there's some people that think that any action won't work. And we know from this data that action does work. And we also know that it's not a complete fix. So I just want to say that, you know, this is about livability, protecting our community's safety, anticipating climate change, anticipating what it is, and then remembering that, you know, a while ago, when we had this conversation, there was a lot of people that didn't even believe in climate change. Now, 70% of the country believes in climate change, and in Washington County, we're at 80%. So we're at a way higher place. And those, and there's many of those people that believe that we should be taking action a majority, and that's a high-raising number. I don't think that number's going to go down as the concerns are being raised by, for instance, it hit the front page of the Wall Street Journal this weekend that the, who was it? The Standard Family Company is working and advocating against Exxon, who they started at, and said that the founders would be really upset about the damage that's done to our environment. So when you have those families involved and the conversation going the way that it is, I think that, anyway, I'm really excited about it. I'm excited about the positive results and keeping the community engaged. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sure. Council President Pratt?
I guess you have any specific actions you'd like to see? I'd like to start with the natural gas one. And Nina did have a point. Everything has a cost, environmental costs, some more than others. I like what you said about leaving that in as a tool that is probably not going to be in our five-year plan if we're revisiting in five years. We, this, as you know, this is an area where our knowledge and the technology is advancing at a rapid pace, so it will be different in five years, and it's worth a revisit at that time or in the future. The things I'd like to see right now are that we consider where our city's going in the next five years. So we know we have commercial development. We know we have parks going in, so that we're looking at what's going to happen in our city and what actions we can take as we especially do new things in our city. And then the criteria is, well, number one, not something that's controversial. And I don't want it to be something, I want it to be something that's cost-effective and, and, you know, with the floods and the fire, the heat and our tree canopies, the roofs that Counselor Brooks talks about, I think it's worth looking at to see if, you know, the, the energy savings that those things will provide and how cost-effective they are in that. We're doing a whole criteria of looking at, and the effectiveness overall of taking actions. But, and thank you for your work.
Awesome. Thank you. My pleasure.
Other questions, comments? Councilor Gonzalez, then Councilor Ray.
So thank you for putting this together. I had to ask early in the stage that how many respondents did we receive? And at the time, it wasn't a sufficient amount of response. So when I saw this graph that it was a majority of support, how many were they?
We had 330 respondents to this graph.
From those small amount, that's a very small amount of our 27,000 people that we have here.
Yep.
To say that it's, they're all in favor. I do believe in climate action plan. I'm in that business in my professional career, and I've spent a lot talking about it. But I am worried about the Northwest Natural Gas even being on this plan because it is just a plan now, but it could be a roadmap to regulation, which typically, it ends up happening that way. It's all nice and friendly and good for the earth. Next you know, it's sanctioned. And I think it should be axed from the plan. There is some low-hanging fruit that I would like to see that I've been asking, but I have not got any feedback. For 37 years, we have been Tree City, okay? Right now, according to the US Department of Agriculture, one acre of forest can suck up six tons of carbon dioxide, okay? It's a huge number. Twolton is roughly comprised of about 1,100 acres. So if we take our 27,000 population divided by 18, we're really close. If we were to focus on low-hanging fruit of bolstering our tree plan, which I have not heard anything about that, that would eliminate a lot of this conversation as well. But of course, technologies are coming, so I'm excited about all those kinds of things. But with technology coming, the low-hanging fruit, which is just our trees, we could achieve some of these goals without having to even mention Northwest Natural Gas in our plan. So with our 175 acres of parks and wetlands, I mean, that's a lot of carbon that could be sucked up. But not only that, the benefits that it has on water conservation, wildlife, urban temperatures, their mental health. So I'm with you, I'm with you on this. But I, I would like to see, I would like to see, to talk about trees, because that would clean up a lot of this carbon that we have in the air naturally. I mean, the whole state of Oregon is a park. It really is. I worry about the high cost of electrification. I was part of the team to try to dig people out when the ICE tore down cables and electricity, and people were out of power in Westland for almost a week. But gas was fine. People who had gas and gas fireplaces, they fed their neighborhoods, their neighbors. And so I worry about the high cost. Where does our electricity, the electricity that we get, is it fueled by coal? Do you know? Would this possibly be Northwest?
It can be. I can't speak to PG's portfolio of sourcing, and it changes depending on the day and the loads. But it is not zero emission today.
So there's trade-offs, right? I mean, so we're going to get more electrified, but yet we're going to be using carbon, high emission to power ourselves. So I do worry about that. So I would not like to see, I would like to see Northwest Natural Gas should be axed from the plan because there is low-hanging fruit that we can do. I like some of the other things that are on here, but we still have not addressed our trees. We still have not talked about smart water and smart controllers and the credits for that. All those are low-hanging fruits right now. We can do those right now versus developing this super-complex plan for the next 20 years, which I understand we have to do something. But we have low-hanging fruit right now that we can do that we're not doing.
Thank you.
We could. So I would like to see some of that. So.
We can incorporate that.
What I have to say about that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilor Ray.
Thank you for the presentation, Nick. I agree. I think there are some low-hanging fruits that we can start off right now. I like the idea Counselor Gonzalez mentioned about the trees. I didn't even think about that. But if that is correct, then these are things that actually bring positivity and makes it look greener and nicer, and people feel happy about having, being around life, like trees, not necessarily people. But I, I also feel like, I like the idea that you are, we are going to see this every, revise this or review it, update it every five years because things change, and we don't know what, what things are going to happen in the future. And I also want to see more, I want to, obviously, we want to be, we want to electrify our community, but at the same time, how feasible is that? How costly is that? Or even in case of an emergency, everything goes down, what is going to be that backup plan? Because we're not going to, like you said, people, we value people, right? That's one of the things that you mentioned in the plan. But if everything goes down, what are we going to rely on? What is that plan? One of the things that the consultant mentioned, and I had learned this from before, that most people die during, during winters than during hot seasons. And, and so sometimes when we think of climate change, we're thinking of, of just hot seasons, but we've got to also think about the long, we are having longer winter days. And we, once someone is frozen, you can thaw that person, but we're, you know what I mean? That's it. We're gone. They're gone. So I can see that. I can, I need us to think that way, too. It's not just global or warming, or it's the, that's why it's called climate change, because it's changing in different ways. So I also want to prepare for those days that are cold, icy, like we had in January, where, you know, I had a couple of friends, older friends, that did not have power for eight days. These are 80-year-olds that had to go somewhere else to find warmth. And so I encourage us to think of that way as well, and I just, the hot days, but also, I mean, even in hot days, we're saying, oh, we're telling people not to use an AC, but we have experience that when we don't have an AC, we can even overheat. So it happened to us when we were driving a bus, so we didn't have AC, and we were, it was pretty warm. So I gotta, let's just think about all that, not just the hot days, but also the colder days and the extreme cold days that we're having. I think we, we forget about that. And what are we going to do during those days? How are we going to have a backup when the light goes out? I experienced three days of no, no heat, and it was, it was pretty cold. And I'm not a, you know, a senior citizen or someone in that age group that can pass away from, from cold. So I'm just, I just want us to look at that. And I like the idea of reviewing this every five years because of that, because we don't know what changes. We don't know what policy comes from, also in the feds and state and all that. So I do appreciate, I read through the plan, I heard it. I didn't read it. I heard it. I put it on the voice out loud, and that helps a lot. But thank you. There was a lot of great idea, there were a lot of great ideas there that we can start, number one, with the trees. I love that idea. I have no idea if we can do that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other comments? Councilor Sacco?
Thank you. I guess just to answer the questions in front of us, I mean, I think that everything we do at the city needs to be looked through this lens in every department. And so I would, you know, obviously, start just with decisions that are being made on a daily basis. And I would like to see, I don't have any specific actions, but the ones that have the biggest impact and then low-hanging fruit, and I think that's pretty obvious. But personally, the things I'm most interested in are consumption. And there's a lot in this report about consumption and our, every choice that we make on a daily basis, we can improve our, our choices that impact the environment, impact climate, from what we put in our, what we put in our bodies, to how we get from place to place, to, you know, using a dish rag instead of a paper towel. I mean, those little choices add up, and I just think that there needs to be some more education around that. I read through the comments, the comment section, and you can tell that things like plant-based diet, people think of that as people that want to get skinny. plant-based diet, people think of that as people that wanna get skinny and don't really understand how that impacts the environment. And so I think education around those things are gonna be very important. Probably, you know, obviously, again, the big picture, the low hanging fruit, but that's something that I'm personally very passionate about. And I think that with some education, people can understand that what they're doing all the time impacts climate, from the very small things to the larger things as well. When it comes to the, the gas conversation, you know, I also don't see it being something that we, that we change policy on in the next five years. But 2050 is a long time away. And we don't know what the, what the landscape's gonna look like, look like then. And I think that we need to set our future councils up for success and let them know that this is something that we thought about, that we vetted, have that in all the work that we've already done in, in the plan. And not strip it out to give future councils sort of this menu of things that were discussed. So it's not left off the table in case there are, you know, major changes in the next 10, 15 years. Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Hillier?
Yeah, thank you. I always marvel at all the work that so many community members and staff and my fellow counselors have done on this and educated me so much. I do recognize in the, in the strategies and the seven strategies, the low hanging fruit that's already happening in the community. And to Counselor Sacco's point, it would be really exciting, I think, if we could connect a little bit more of the education to the things that are already happening to, for people to see those outcomes, for us to be able to really have that under our belt and be able to discuss that. I, I don't know, do we go meatless Mondays? Do we, like, and how does that connect back to, I mean, I, I don't know, but I do think there's probably best practices that are happening in a lot of communities. I mean, we could learn from Blue Zone communities. I mean, there's a whole lot of things that what I would hope could land us within that low hanging fruit sort of thing. And so I guess I skipped the lens. I think that the, the equity lens of this is, is important also. And I worry that if we don't balance an equity lens with the climate, you know, lens, that, that we will not be setting our community or future councils or anyone up for success and being fair. And so I'm a little, I, I feel like maybe there just isn't enough and maybe I'm not, I need to educate myself more. But I feel like there needs to be more focus on equity within this. And, and I mean equity, income, so, I mean, like all the things. I'm not talking, so I think that is a lens that, that is important, I think, or should be, could be more important to our community. Oh, you moved my questions. Okay. Okay. Highest emissions reduction. So, so thinking, it's all right. I got it right here. Flip, flip, flip. So I, I'll be honest. I, I do think that having Northwest Natural at the table and in partnership here tonight, obviously speaking, they are willing, partners, they're talking about changes in the molecules, which I would love to learn more about. And I, I do believe that they need, that gas, natural gas does need to be called out in our plan. And I'm concerned about the language that however, that says transitioned to 100% renewable natural gas and clean hydrogen supply. And so because of my lack of knowledge, I, I don't know if hydrogen has to do, is, is hydrogen what nat, natural gas is switching to? Like, I don't understand that. But I know that PGE can just, you know, move our rates around all the time. And if we're talking about livability in our community and resilience, there's more to just environmental resilience. I mean, our community has to be resilient to pay their bills, right? Like, we can put up all the plans we want to help our, help each of us. I mean, we're aging. I mean, what was that statistic? I mean, God, I'm old. I'm gonna be even older, you know, as we look at this. Well, I, I might not be able to afford to pay my bill and live here in this community at the rates things are going. And if I don't have the option for gas, I'm, I'm kinda concerned about that. I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna lie about that. So I'm concerned about the work, you know, 100% other than the hard, you know, then that's our goal in 2050. And so while I do believe it needs to stay in here, I'm really not comfortable, and again, could be my lack of knowledge, but I am really not comfortable with the community believing, with Northwest Natural Gas believing, that they are the ones that are gonna have to take it, I, take, be removed from, from the system. Whereas the electrical folks are just getting, getting a free ride in, in a sense. And so I hope that, well, I know that it's, this is happening across the nation. It's not just here in Tuolton. And the gas companies across the nation and the world probably are working on these molecules. And so I, I do think that there'll be movement, but I, I'm pretty concerned to take those options away from community members.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Counselors present.
I guess I just would like you to clarify that, what this document is. It's like, to me, it's like a living type document that will change over time as new technologies come on. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would envision this as a roadmap. I think that's where we brought it to at this point. I'm, I've been considering it as a, how to get to where we wanna be in 2050. Here's a variety of tools in the tool belt that we could pick and choose to implement to varying scale, kinda sizing those pieces of the puzzle to get to the end. So if you do one 100%, maybe you need to do one less. If you do two 50%, maybe they add up. And I, cause a lot of this is behavioral change and a lot of this is hard, right? Transportation emissions, building emissions. I mean, do people turn their thermostats down? Well, then we need to worry a little bit less about source. Do people drive a little less? Then we need to worry a little bit less about electrification. So it's really dynamic. And that's why having this broad range of actions, identifying all the areas that need to be addressed, and not all of them being adopted tonight, but coming back in a work plan and then having future discussions and implementation actions on those specific projects will help us get there. And I think as we start to define the work plan and execute actions, they'll be scoped. So then we can easily measure the impact. Cause right now, when we say things like reduce vehicle miles traveled or reduce building emissions, we can kinda scale it based on what we know. But until we know exactly how Tuolton's gonna execute it, we can't say is that 20% or 40%. And so it is a living document. I think that's why setting a five-year work plan and focusing on that and then revisiting it at that frequency is gonna be really helpful. And then if I, if I may, just in terms of the gas ban, in some responsiveness to Northwest Natural and the community, we did craft those actions differently. So there is looks at electrification of existing buildings. Those are separate from new buildings. So what already exists and what's gonna be built in the future fall into different action buckets. So those could be handled differently by council. And the gas ban is not an all-out gas ban. It is a gas ban where practical. So residential and commercial were the emphasis. It's not looking at industrial because electrification can't support our industrial manufacturers' energy needs currently. That's where hydrogen may come in one day. But we did, right size isn't the right word, but pare back the way we were looking at that action even based on what's feasible. So again, trying to keep it as a tool we have, understanding down the road, it may need to be implemented in some fashion. But being responsive of what we're hearing, what Northwest Natural says they can do and what current technology exists today that we can consider.
Counsel Brooks?
I have one other thing about considerations. So understanding and looking at this as a city and with staff of all this very, you know, this big plan. For me, my assumption is it positions us and positions staff, if there are regulations, we don't control the regulations, let's put it that way. So if there are regulations that come from the state, or if there are regulations that come from the feds, that it's not gonna, it's not gonna be like the first time that our city staff has looked at this equation, this problem that we're, very complex problem that we're trying to solve for future generations, just so people can breathe and things like that, right?
Yeah.
So, and as well as being positioned for funding and for being nimble, when those crunches come, let's put it like that, so that we're prepared to do something, get the funding to do it, and be at the forefront of protecting our people and being a clean community. And so I guess I just would like for you to speak to sort of that diversity that we see in this big plan, how you see that it impacts thinking of staff planning. And for me, the considerations are also strategic. So sometimes when I hear low, low hanging fruit, I'm like, yeah, that's great. But I also don't want it to be a plan that we would have just done because it's all low hanging fruit. You don't need a plan for that. We want a plan that works, that's strategic, that's thought out, that there's community engagement, that's funded, and that has environmental expertise that's helping us solve this problem. Cause that's not our job, to protect our community. So, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'll take a stab. You, let me know if you want me to elaborate. So wide variety of actions, wide breadth of, of kind of scope of this plan, does give staff the ability to start to educate themselves, start to understand what opportunities exist. I think what it also does, to Counsel Sacco's earlier point, is as we implement future work, these things start to overlap, right? We get, we get some opportunities that arise. And so when we have ideas in the plan that have some scoping, some measurements, we know that they're gonna have some impact towards our goal. When future projects come into the city, when future changes in regulation happen or code updates happen, we can go peel these out and decide is now the right time? Is this the right way, method means, right? And so it does just make sure our purview is open to what may be at our disposal to get where we wanna go. And I think having them there helps make sure that we don't lose sight of them, whatever they are, whether it be consumption based, whether it be transportation based, or whether it be building energy.
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, because the drivers aren't just our city council, they're the environment itself and regulators and how we look at these things as surprises happen. So that would, that's another consideration. And I don't wanna leave off, I was just kinda surprised at the, the building, the, the industrial building, commercial building outputs. So I also think being future thinking in around when we're doing development, I don't know what those regulations, if they fall into, which, I'm always trying to figure out which bucket they fall into. But that for me is a big thing. And if somebody's gonna put a roof on an industrial building, they're gonna have to pay for a roof. So if it's a light roof or a dark roof, I just don't see where that's a huge thing. So I would love to see some code updates that align with what people are doing already in a lot of other places and what people are prepared to do if they've been working a lot of communities, like you see with nonprofits, you see with bigger industrial companies and just getting with it on that.
Absolutely. And I think Passau Creek provides a good opportunity for that work to happen.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I've got one question, as for the city attorney. Ms. Carlson mentioned that the gas ban is unconstitutional. Was she, I'm just asking your opinion, is there something in the, I know it's not in the federal constitution, is there something in the Oregon constitution?
Your honor, I'd have to look at that. I'm not, off the top of my head, I don't know the answer to that. I don't think so, but I can certainly check and find out.
Except that one, I haven't heard before.
Yeah.
Okay. I know other jurisdictions are, the courts are giving them illegal gas bans. But it's my, I'm fine with the plan. And as far as the concern with natural gas, the suggestion I would have was, is to keep it in here. But on the chevrons for the timeout is to add another chevron to make it six to 10 years, not zero to five.
Yeah.
Cause in the zero to five, as Ms. Carlson was saying, Northwest Natural might have the better molecules, they're more efficient. Hydrogen might be more of a reality. It was interesting, you know, everyone's talking about hydrogen as a clean fuel. In the trip to DC, Senator Merkley is all over this stuff. And he pointed out, there's good hydrogen and there's bad hydrogen. And right now, we're focusing on the bad hydrogen.
Yeah.
That we're chemically developing hydrogen, that has off gases, if you will, that are just as bad as what we're doing right now. That you have to find a natural source of hydrogen for this to actually work. And we haven't figured that out yet. But that's the first time I heard about bad hydrogen.
There's a, there's a whole color scale of hydrogen you could learn about, from black to turquoise to green.
Yeah. And Senator Merkley is all over.
The whole thing.
Yep. So I think by pushing out the timeline to six to 10 years, would dissipate some of the fear that we're gonna, you know, take gas away. I have gas, furnace, the water, you know, whole shindig. And yeah, I was lucky enough to have it during the ice storm. And I think, you know, this is just a placeholder. I, I look back to my days on, you know, Tuolton Tomorrow, where we had a 30-year plan. And there's stuff on the plan that never got implemented. There was never an appetite for it. But at least it was in the plan. As Counsel Sacco said, future city councils could look at it, future city staff can say, oh crap, you know, they did look at this and, you know, what were they looking at? So I'd be okay with leaving it there, but adding an extra chevron for a further timeout. Other comments?
I'll be here.
Okay. Counselor Gonzalez?
So when I was reviewing the, the pretty dense packet that was delivered to us, that we printed out, it was a lot of things that we can initiate this conversation with in the Climate Action Plan. But because we know the national conversation has been to eliminate gas, it has been a conversation. So for it to show up on this today, you know, it is on the forefront. I understand it's not gonna be implemented today or tomorrow or next five years, but it is on the short list to be tackled upon, to have a conversation, to convince people. It is the goal of, and to say it is not the goal, it, it is not true. It's here in this first draft right now for us. Out of all this huge packet, for this to make it on the first cover, yeah, it's, it's not gonna happen tomorrow. I understand that. But there's, they're working towards that end. You know, so when I talk about the low hanging fruit that we're not doing, you know, and this is a very complicated problem, I think we should first focus on what we can do. Let's get our tree ordinance in place. It's, it's very low. Let's get our tax credits for water conservation. I mean, you can almost save 30% on water utilization just by having smart water controllers through all of our communities. We can pass ordinance to not allow battery controllers to be installed in HOAs. Those are highly wasteful, okay? And those are things that we don't need this complicated plan. Sure, let's keep the plan going. But they are things that we can do right now that would, that would help meet that end. So for us to make it on the first draft, I, I am concerned because they're working towards that end. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, counsel discussion?
What do we discuss?
I mean, it's, you know, I mean, several of us have mentioned that we're okay with the natural gas to remain and stuff, or you can amend it, or you can ask for adoption.
I, I very much like your idea of amending it to be a longer term action to look at.
Six to 10.
I really don't think it's something for right now, but we just don't know what it's gonna be like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm happy, yeah, happy to make that change, I think.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Counselor Brooks?
Yeah, I'd like to see it zero to 10, just to give the, it's not saying that we wanna look at it before five years, but if there was a need to look at it, you could.
It's not in the graph.
But not a ban.
It's not in the graph.
Oh, it's not in the graph.
I think our, our scale is zero to five or six to 10. So we have to.
Okay, sorry. That's fine. Sorry.
We need a special graph for that.
Yeah. All right.
I'll make them.
And these can always be moved.
Yeah.
Not to speak out of turn, right? But like, the graph just gives us an idea of what we're anticipating. These are ultimately up to council's desire.
Okay. I'd like to move to adopt Resolution Number 5775-24 as amended.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution Number 5775-24, adopting a community climate action plan with the, the change for the chevrons to be a longer term for items four, four, and four, five to be six to 10 years out. All right. Any discussions on those motions? All right. It's a roll call. So Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes, just eat your bananas. Don't let them die.
Yeah, filter the gas. Counsel Gonzalez?
I know.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So it's a six, one vote. The resolution is passed.
Thank you.
All right. We had no items removed from consent. That brings it. And the next item is council communications. Any counselors wishing to have any communications? Counsel President Pratt?
I have two things. The first is really quick, that this, the eighth is Splendor Dash, and they still need zombie volunteers, so, if you're up to it. And then I, I just, I wanna make a comment in reference um, I wanna make a comment, um, in reference to last council meeting. Our responsibility serving on council is to make the best possible decisions for our community and to make sure the city staff has the needed support to enact these decisions. Voicing our varying perspectives is essential to making the best and most informed decisions as a governing body. At times, this can mean somewhat heated discussions. To operate most effectively as a single governing body, it is imperative that each of us keep in mind the importance of engaging in this process with civil discourse, keeping the focus on the topic at hand without taking it personally, and showing respect for the mayor and other councillors. It is through our joint efforts that we can best serve the interest of all who work, play, and live in Twalton.
Council Brooks.
Um, thank you. I just also wanted to acknowledge that, um, I don't know if we did or not, that May is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and, um, just thinking about those folks in our community. Thank you.
All right. Other communications?
I'll just, again, remind folks who weren't tuned in to the work session, uh, the River Park CIO is doing a community fair on, uh, June 1st, from 11 to 1:00 at Jurgens Park. Uh, there'll be multiple booths, uh, to learn things about the city, about the police, about planting. Uh, I believe usually there's some drawings, so you can go maybe to win some, uh, stuff from, uh, those folks hosting. It was a lot of fun last year. Um, again, Jurgens Park from 11 to 1:00 on June 1st. Anything else? All right, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Come on, Cindy.
Second.
A motion, a second, to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Good evening. Have a good.